The March meeting of the Library, the North Liberty Library Board of Trustees has now come to order. Our first order of business, are there any additions or changes we need to make to the agenda? There are not. Seeing no one in the gallery for a public comment, we will not have a public comment. Next order of business, the approval of the January minutes. Do we have any problems, comments with minutes of January? Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
I make a motion to approve January minutes.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Hearing no nays, the minutes are approved. The next item on the agenda is the discussion of the training that we just watched. So now that we've viewed the training, we'll take the opportunity to talk amongst ourselves about what we saw, how we feel, things that we might want to do in the future, say the suggestions to perhaps look at the policy for repeated challenges. So the webinar was on intellectual freedom, the, I forget the title.
Oh, it was a trustees.
A trustee.
I mean, for trustees, but, and Iowa City Library Director, or not Director, their collection development person, Anne Mangano.
So.
Has the North Liberty Library received any requests to hold information?
So we've never had, that we had one materials request challenge, it's been years, years and years. But it was because the information, they felt the information was inaccurate, which was one of the things, and it actually came after some research that they decided, I was not involved in that, but that it was determined that it actually was an inaccurate portrayal of a group, so it was removed at the time, but based on that, not on anything like a belief pattern or anything. So, other than that, we've not had any formal challenges at the library since I've been there for 25 plus years. We have had instances where people might ask a question about a book, or ask a question about, like, someone offered to come in and they wanted to restructure all of our books on grieving and mourning, and for some particular reason, they offered to come in and redo all of our stuff, and they were told, "Thank you," but no, thank you. And other than that, we really haven't ever had any, anything that we've had to worry about. I know in Iowa City, it's just a very political community, so I think that they get a little more, people get a little more insightful there.
Do we have a policy in place, though, for the library if someone does challenge a book and wants to have it removed from the shelf? Then do we have something in place that, you know?
The structures in place where they would, I mean, obviously, first, the first line is that we listen.
Right.
And a lot of times, that's all that people want. The second would be if they were upset, they could bring, ours is called a statement of concern about a piece of, or about a library service or material, I think it's called, I can't remember what we titled it, new, but statement of concern rather than reconsideration. And I do know that was a fairly new thing that the board in Iowa City adopted, was just that they don't reconsider anything.
Yeah, that was interesting. I was surprised by that. Can you speak to, do you have any additional information on that?
I don't know a lot about it. I know that it's fairly recent that they, I think it's pretty recent that they did that, but it's, they basically just took away the right, or the request for outside groups to reconsider, which I think, right now, isn't a bad idea, because, I mean, when they come out with the new numbers for 2022, even in the last quarter of '22, there were thousands, thousands. And they're coming from groups outside of state, they're coming from these politicized groups that are basically privatizing industry, they're about privatization and, and what they're calling dark money, or money, you know, groups that are, maybe have some vested interest in what they're doing. And I don't think that necessarily some of the folks that are in those groups, like Moms for Liberty, have those intentions or even understand that that's what it's about. They just think they're doing something that's best for their kids. Too, I mean, so I don't, I think it's misleading for some folks. But overall, it's kind of, it's interesting what's happening across the country.
Yeah.
And if I'm remembering right, the request for, or the, the statement of concern, it's very well, at least what we have, it's very well laid out for one specific material, correct? There's not really an option to lay a blanket, 500 titles.
Yeah, I mean, and I'll go back, I want to go back and review it. I was taking some notes, but yes, I think that it is pretty specific to, have you read that? Have you looked at the whole, viewed the whole piece of material?
And what is your concern within that material?
So it's very, and they also, I'd also ask, are you representing a group, or are you doing it for yourself? That was something we added. I could see also adding the, the statement, I mean, and I'd have to check with, I would check with our city attorney. I have a great relationship with our city attorney, and he's very wise. I mean, and he would refer us if he thought we needed to be referred, because he has done that, actually. He's talked to other attorneys for me for other questions that I've had. So I would ask him, but I think limiting it to Johnson County taxpayers, basically, people who, who have taxes that go into our library, specifically support our library, so Johnson County residents and North Liberty residents would be a reasonable thing to do if, if he agrees. I also think that saying, you know, that we wouldn't, we won't consider a piece of material that's been through the process, you know, for, I would say, three years. I mean, that, I don't think it needs to be like tomorrow, or, you know, even six months. I would say it's a long time.
Yeah.
Standing thing, or perhaps it's just that we won't reconsider it again, if it's been reconsidered. If he thinks that that would be something that we could do legally.
Yeah, that would be interesting, because you would have the precedent set of a piece of, of challenged material having gone through the process, and thank you for your second request, here's the information on, on how the decision was made, nothing has changed in the policy that would.
And part of that also would protect, I think, protect from the board angle with, with where people will, there have been boards who've had someone on the board challenge a piece of material. I, when I was the Chair of the Intellectual Freedom Committee, there was an instance where a library had a board member bring something to a staff person or vice versa, I can't remember which way it went, and say, "I'm really worried about this being in the collection," and it was a book on just human sexuality. And I actually ended up talking to the author, and she walked me through some things, and I ended up going to their board meeting and trying to support it. The structure was not in place like it is today with the, with the Intellectual Freedom Group. We started building some of that, but, and just trying to support them on a local level. But it was, it is very stressful, and, you know, watching, hearing from people who've been through it, it's very fast-paced. They want answers immediately, you know, they recommend you don't remove the material until after, you know, you've decided that that's happened or it's been pulled off the shelf as soon as someone says something, because they get worried. So I think there, you know, we want to make sure the steps are in place and that our, our staff and our board is well-trained, which is why I wanted to bring this video, which I thought they did a great job being neutral about the, and just being informative.
Yes, I agree.
I made a couple of other notes, so let's see if there was anything else I was gonna bring up to you guys.
I love the history of the, the Library Bill of Rights that she, I was like, "Oh, I want to read that book she referenced."
Yes, I actually wrote that down too. I have not read the book, The American Midnight yet.
Do you, do you think that we could get a copy of that slide with the referenced books that she had?
Yeah.
Yeah, good idea.
Yeah.
I can send, actually, I mean, I can do that, or I can also just send you the whole video.
Sure.
I'll send you a link to the video, but also to the, I'll copy the slides for you. Okay.
As we stand for the Board of Trustees, is there anything that we need to do now, that we need to, like, amend any policies or anything?
Um, I think what I'd like to do, if you guys are agreeable to it, is just to bring that information to Grant, our city attorney, and ask his opinion, and propose it at the next meeting. Just shift the timeline, because I think we did that one in October-ish. So shift the timeline to make sure that we're, and I'll take a look at Iowa, like Iowa Cities, and I'll also take a look at Amanda's policy in Dubuque County and see what they have, and see if there's anything else I think we're missing. I think we're pretty solid, but it's always good to, to have other eyes on it and look at other viewpoints, so. If you guys are agreeable to that, I can do that, those things.
Yep, yeah, that sounds great.
And in the unlikely event, I would like to propose that the single voice of, of the library be the director and not the president. We can, we can debate this in the future, but that, that would be my initial suggestion.
I mean, yeah, I think that it's, it's good, you know.
Especially given that, that we're not a governing board.
Yeah.
So I really, we really don't.
And we also have, you know, a great communications department who's really helpful and supportive about those things, so. Not much gets out there without us talking with Nick and the communications team, so.
And I guess, just, if you don't know it, there is a Moms for Liberty in Inland County. They meet regularly at one of the library meeting rooms. So, and I don't see any evidence that there's a Moms for Liberty yet in, in Johnson County, but I wouldn't be surprised. And then I don't know if we want to wait for your, your report, but I think I'm also interested in what it means when the state librarian is going to be a political appointee, and how that's going to, what kind of power that they have over our stewardship of our library and our community, because the politicians have made it kind of clear, at least in their relationship with school libraries, that they've got no problem pushing, restricting available, materials being available to, to people.
Yeah, so for when you guys, when they mentioned that, I don't know how much you guys have kept up on that, but there were, I mean, multiple layers of things that were affecting particularly school libraries. I drove to the Capitol, or talked to you guys about that a little bit, three or four times, or three times in the last month, to be there to advocate, which did very little, unfortunately. And because I'm on the board for the Iowa Library Association, there was a lot of discussion going on. Additionally, there were, I believe, over 19, I don't know, can't remember the number, of bills that were adversely affected LGBTQ communities, among other things. So there's a lot going on at the state level this year that was definitely alarming for local control, as you mentioned, and with the state library, and where that's gonna fall. It's, it's very interesting. I would say, the other things we know about, you know, the Vinson cases that came up last year, you probably have all heard about that, because that was in the news big time. They lost their director, and then they lost another, the interim director, and then they lost a couple other staff, to the point where they had to close their doors, because they just were not ready. They're, they worked really hard to be more prepared now, I think, and they have hired a new director. And I know that, because one of our former library board members asked me, it's a cousin or some relation to them, and asked if they could connect them with us to talk about, more just about, in general, about libraries, so. You know, I think being prepared, having the support of the state, and maybe looking at adding, I know we have something in there about that we, you know, with the Association for Small Libraries and ALA, but I also think having something in there that we will report challenges to those bodies to make sure that, that that information is getting, or needs to be for statistical purposes and for future knowledge. And I know Iowa City had a drag story time last week. My friend had sent me a couple, a little bit of information about the types of threats she was getting the day before. Some very interesting things, like that she, she belonged in a wood chipper, and, among other things. And then they had 400 people, and only about 10 of them were protesting. Nine of the 10 protesters followed all requests and things. There was one who did not, who apparently has been banned now from any public facility, or been involved in these types of events from the police. And they had several people reach out, somebody sent them flowers to compliment them on the good, and two people who said they changed their views after attending. So, feels like a win.
Were the protesters inside at the story time?
There, there were at least one, because I saw a picture of that one holding up a sign with the groomer words on it, yeah.
Have they been submitting formal requests to the library?
I don't know.
Yeah, just curious.
I don't know. I know the la, this is their second, but drag story time in a while, and the last one, they had somebody there who was obviously well-versed in the law and was telling people what to do and not to do at that event, but they were very well-prepared at that event as well to handle those, so, the staff. So. Anything else anybody that stood out, or anybody wants to talk about? Well, thank you for humoring me and watching it. I thought it was really interesting.
It was very good. Thank you.
All right.
All right. We'll move to the next agenda item, which is reports.
All right, well, I'm gonna start with the budget and just say that I have, don't remember a time when personnel and commodities and the average for the year were all the same, that 66%, and I'm actually amazed by that, particularly personnel, which I don't remember a time when we were not over in personnel at some point in the year, so I think that's really, speaks to a couple things. One is just Jen's really paying attention to the scheduling. She does a great job making sure we stay within our hours and, and being efficient in how we spread out the hours. We are, I think we'll see a spike in some of that as we move into summer and decide where we need to put more people on the schedule. It, it never fails to amaze me that, like, we have moved to four on the weekends again, which has always been, in the past, before pre-COVID, was always our requirement, was at least four on staff during our peak hours. We had gone down to three, and then at the request of the team, gotten back up to four, because they're starting to get busier again. And then expanded those hours to be a little bit longer for some of the part-timers. And this weekend, we had somebody out, so that seems to be, you know, there's always these challenges of trying to shuffle people around. We have a great team right now, and they're really willing to step up and help each other. I worked on Saturday, it was really fun to be there. It's nice to be there off-hours and see things, how things are going, so. I was able to do that, so that was fun. And do you guys have any more questions? I guess I got sidetracked about the budget. Do you guys have any questions about that? I'm just so excited with those numbers. All right, I can move on then.
Yes.
So I will, are we, do we have Friends next, or do we have?
Friends next.
The Friends had meant to talk about their book sale, that they'll have a book sale in June, and they have added a second book sale that they'll be having in the fall, at the end of September. We have shifted those shelves away now, and I talked about that shelf move, so the book sale is no longer ongoing, much to a few people's chagrin, but we had to repurpose those shelves, and it's, it's been going really well. Andrew's been getting everything situated and now that they're moved, so they're gonna add that second book sale. And they've also, they also, which I have down below, but purchased Read Band Books t-shirts for all the library staff, that's for our uniform. Whoever wanted them on the staff was able to get those, and actually, they were supposed to be pretty pricey, and some of that money goes back to a group that's about, anti-censorship group, and when I called to get the order, they halved them since we had so many shirts, so we got them for a really good price as well. Operations update, and because we didn't have a February meeting, you guys don't know this at all, unless you come in the library. Amy Golly put in her resignation not too long after the meeting in January. She had an opportunity at another library that was a little more focused to what she wanted to do and closer to home. So sadly, sad for us, but great for her. We wish her well as she moves on. So we spent the last couple of months going through that process to hire someone new. We had 40 applicants, which I was really, actually, great, because we used to get, you know, 60 or 70 applicants, and then over COVID times, we were dropped down to, you know, 20 or less. So it was really good to see that, that number, and some really, really talented applicants, so we had a good pool to, to interview, and some, some variety of skills, which I thought was interesting. And so we offered the position to Nick Schuman, who is currently the Director at the West Branch Public Library, for about another week. And we're, we'll be excited, we've worked with him, I've worked with him multiple times over the years on different things. So we'll be excited to bring him on board. He starts on March 30th, so next week. He has a background of, he has a library degree, but also an IT degree, so he'll bring some interesting things to the table with that. We will try not to tap into him more than just helping patrons too much on that IT, it's really, we don't want to fall into that trap. We have an IT person, so, but he'll be good to help us with some of the, just reviewing some of things like our databases. I think helping us, you know, with our, our integrated library system, you know, our circulation software, things like that. Will be great to have him on board to help with those things. I told you about the Friends purchasing. The other thing is, is that I signed, I joined as a North Liberty organization, as a library as an organization, the Unite Against Band Books. It's literally just filling out a form and saying, "We are on board for that." As a national initiative, it just empowers people to stand up against censorship. There's a lot of material and information there. The Iowa Library Association also signed that this month, so I thought it was a good thing for us to add our name to. If any of you are interested, you can follow that link and sign as individuals as well. And then I, we'll talk to you a little bit about, I traveled to the Capitol two times with Sam Helmick. They are from the Iowa City Public Library, and just was there more as a body. The first time we went, we weren't even allowed in the room. They had state troopers at the door and said it was too full, and they weren't letting people stand. We have heard that that is not really okay, but that they're not, they're just saying too bad if you don't like it. So, I don't know. It was interesting, we just stood in the hallway with a bunch of people, but it was by far the majority of the people out there were anti-censorship folks. There was a group there. It was very civil amongst everybody. There was definitely some interesting conversations going on, but people were civil about it, and so that was interesting. The second time, we got into the room, but then we're told if we didn't have a chair, we had to leave. But they did, that time, they were prepared, and they had an overflow room for us with a video feed, so we were able to be in the next room over. And the other thing is that the Democrats put together an hour before a chance for folks on the anti-censorship side to speak, because the first time around, they weren't allowed to speak at all. The second time, they allowed them to speak part, it was kind of split on that second meeting. And the second meeting also, there was a lot of cheering from our room, which apparently was, they didn't tell us to be quiet, but they weren't very happy about it. And in fact, a couple legislators came in and said they wanted to be in the room with us instead. So that, it was interesting. It's, it's an interesting process to, to see and watch, and just to be part of. So then we had Library Advocacy Day on the 7th that they mentioned during the meeting, and I, we go to that every year. Jennifer and I both went this year. There were 75 librarians there from all over the state. This is the first time we've done it at noon. We've always done it in the afternoon at like 5:00, trying to catch people as they're leaving the legislator area, so, or at 4:00. So this was really kind of cool. The beauty is, we get to have it in the beautiful, beautiful law library. And then we always give food to the legislators, and particularly their pages like to come in and visit us. So we did have 50 legislators come through, which is probably the most we've ever seen during that event. We typically get most of ours if they're around. Our legislators are very, very supportive of libraries here in Johnson County. And they were, they're always great just to, it's always kind of just a nice check-in, more for us than anything. But we had several legislators stop by our tables. We, they kind of separated it by districts, but we had several legislators that we spoke to who aren't necessarily from Johnson County, but from like Iowa County, and on both sides of the spectrum. I hope there were some positive outcomes from that, and that people heard some of what we were saying. It's hard to know, but, so I just listed some of the concerns that we talked about during, that, that happened, that are going on, and almost all of these, unfortunately, went through the funnel and came out wrong for us, but there was some positives, some things that were eliminated that didn't end up going. The one that we were, I'm trying to think which one, I'm gonna blank out on it, the most. So the, the one that I would say for us is the most concerning is that the requirement for students to get parental consent. If a book is banned in one district, it will be banned across the state in all districts. And then parental consent is required for a kiddo to access that material. That will make it more important for us at public libraries to make sure that they know that we're here for them, and that we have the same materials or those materials for them. The other one is that they're allowing school districts to replace the librarian role with a librarian, if, with anyone who's worked in a public library in any capacity, can work in a school library now. We tried really hard to explain that I am not a teacher, and I would not want to work, I mean, I don't know how to do that work. It's very different from what we do in the public library. I don't know that they got it. Their, their concern is that they can't, they're, some of the smaller districts aren't able to hire teacher librarians, draw teacher librarians to their district, but what we tried to explain was then you're, you're basically dumbing down rural by not having people there who know how to teach them to access the information they need to access and to create the lesson plans. She said, "Well, I hope you don't think that's what we're doing," and I said, "I don't think that's what you're doing. I think that's what the effect will be of what you're doing. That's the impact of this decision." And we tried to explain that putting more money into education would be another way to address that same thing, but alas, I don't think that that worked really well. So lots of things that just kind of impact, will impact local control more than anything. I think that that was across the board, though. It's, it's at the city level. We know that, for instance, North Liberty was impacted about $400,000 on the, because of the tax rollback this year, and that will continue to have some impact. Ryan handled that really well. Our city administrator, you know, he asked us to take some, a look at some things, and he split some, found three different ways for us to make up that difference, and we were able to do some shuffling in the budget. We, the library budget was already flat to actually giving back a little bit this year. I tried really hard to have a pretty flat budget, so he didn't ask me to do much, but I did find a little bit of money to give back, just because I think it's only fair that we're all being, you know, the impact happens to all of us, and so it's fair for us to work together to solve it. And that is pretty much everything for the, from my perspective, and then we have the staff reports, of course. Did anybody have any questions about staff reports? I will say, I'm gonna try something new in the next couple of months, which is I've created in OneNote on our, in our Microsoft program, some updates for the, the staff to use to update me every month on what they're working on. Just because I feel like as we've grown and we're so fast-paced, that sometimes my finger is not on the pulse of some things that are going on, and they forget, they have these great meetings, and they, they're all in tune and in sync and working, and then I'll say something like, "Well, yeah, that's been going on for a while," and I'm like, "Wait, wait, when did that happen?" Which is great. I love it that they work so independently and do the work, but sometimes it's good for me to also know just the basics of what's going on, so that's one way that I'm doing that, and it also will help me, I have the board report built into that as well. So I'm hoping that that will make things a little more seamless and sort of be these working documents that we'll have. So more to come on that. We'll see how it goes. Other than that, I will mention Melanie, the tiny art show that Melanie mentions in her report. We, those were coming back in droves this afternoon when I was at the desk. I don't know how many went out. It was over 200. I don't know how many came back, but it was a lot, and really fun. Really, we had so many comments and people so excited. I did have one little girl was sobbing when her mom made her turn it into tape. Promised her she could have it back, and that really wasn't the intent, but. Alas. Oh, and then I guess I could update you guys that we will, well, I guess you'll hear it next month, but we are working on an in-service, so we'll be closed one day in April to do a training. And that is everything that I have about that report. And then I did just include the strategic plan here with comments, and you can see comments in blue throughout the plan on things that have been started and updated. So not a ton is going on, and the strategic plan is also built into that monthly update. I think that'll help us just stay on target with it and make sure that we're moving and galvanizing ourselves and not losing momentum on it. So is there any questions in the strategic plan, or it's more just an update for you guys to see what's, that things are happening, progressing? I will tell you, though, that I'm really excited. One of the pieces that's for me. Um, I will tell you though, that I'm really excited. One of the pieces that's for me or for administration was to make sure that wayfinding to the library is really good, so that people are able to find us. Um, knowing that even still now today, we have people once in a while come in and say, I didn't even know there was a library here. Um, I, I know, but, you know, I, I know. So that just, I know, it's funny. That discussion, um, actually brought about a larger city plan. Um, I, I reached out to our city planner and then ended up looping our city administrator in and now we're talking about municipal signage throughout the city, um, on a different level. So it's gonna be a little slower project, but I think it'll be, end up being really cool. Um, the city planner, Russ, uh, had some really, Ryan Rusnick had some great ideas, so I think that'll be really neat. And that is, does anybody have questions about the strategic planning or? Um, I will, once Nick is in place and as Adult Services, I'll ask him to take a look at his sections, see if there's anything he wants to add. We want this to be a fluid document, so if he's got areas of interest, we want to make sure that they're included too, since he wasn't here for that. Um, and then the mission statement, I did include it here, but I don't, um, my plan would be one, and it was waiting for the strategic plan to be done. We just haven't had any, an opportunity to do anything more with it yet, um, is to look at that mission statement. And there's a few notes in here and those came from, uh, Kelly. Both of these actually came from Kelly. The, or the second one, the learning, adding a learnacy, learning and literacy component to that, which makes sense with our strategic planning and also just making sure that it echoes the, the diversity and inclusion values that we hold. Um, so I do think we'd like to take a look at the mission statement and do something with it. Whether, we used a really interesting process last time that is just online, um, to step through that. And actually, one of our board members had some, uh, moderation practice, so she was able to come in and work with us on that. So I just need to find someone to do that work with us. I think it works well to have an outside person kind of involved in it. Um, my, I guess my request would be just to give us some time. I don't know when, it might not happen for a while. Um, it just seems like where there's always something. But, um, I would like to start talking with them at the next, uh, in-service meeting about what that could look like and, and proceed with that. And it may be that we just raise it and ask to have it added to an agenda item sometime soon. That is that, and I don't know why that blank page is in there. I thought I got it out of there, but apparently not. And then finally, we are down to the program policy, which I, is that a different item on your agenda to you, Scott?
It's, uh, the third in the policy review section.
Great. So this policy, um, I basically asked the staff, our programming staff, to get a jumpstart on it and, and so they created, um, the initial, I guess you can't see the comments on there, but, um, I thought, when I looked at, when I look at it, you can, but.
When I look at it on the.
In the packet, you can?
My packet.
Okay, great. Yeah, because here I can, but, um, so mainly, they, they took it and ran with it. They, they created the, the framework for it and then I took it and just moved a few things around, added a few things that I thought, um, we should have in different areas, uh, wrote the purpose, or, you know, kind of adjusted the purpose statement a little bit and then sent it to our city attorney, Grant. Um, Grant, uh, took a look at it and said, actually called me and said, you guys did such a good job. Here's a couple of things. And he had just some comments that, just to kind of make us think about the way we had some things worded in here. Um, so we adjusted some wording based, I, I basically took all of his comments and made, made adjustments based on what he had, had suggested. Um, the main thing we wanted was to have this also be a protection against censorship um, and to have us protected for things like if we decide to have a drag story time or some other story time, um, that people might disagree with, um, that we think is important for, um, our community to, to do that. What, exactly what Amanda brings up at the end of the video, which is to, to represent all areas of our community. Um, so that note at the bottom is a note that's also in, um, our meeting room policy and in other areas, so we just want to have that documented well. The other thing he mentioned, and it might be something we start to look at, um, in general in our policies again. So we used to capitalize the word library in our policies and then I think along the way, a board member at some point said, why are we capitalizing it? We kind of uncapitalized it, made it lowercase. Um, Grant suggested that we, that that, um, suggests ownership. The library as the owner of this document, as the owner of the decision-making. Um, so I think it's probably something we need to look at again, um, and make sure as we're going through each policy that the word is appropriately capitalized where it needs to be as the owner. Um, and that's not something that's probably reflected here completely, but I'll, I can do that if, just with your, um, approval. To, if you don't mind, you can approve it with knowing that I can make those changes. Otherwise, I think it's a pretty solid, um, document and, uh, Grant felt that it did what we wanted it to do. The other purpose, I guess, is to ensure like, so there is another library that told me that they have somebody who wants to, um, actually from Moms for Liberty, who is doing storytimes with the books that they think are appropriate in their, their meeting rooms now, and she wants to partner and have the library promote those. Um, so this is something that we want to make sure that we're protected on that into, thus that note, that statement that we are, we don't, um, condone that discrimination.
Any concerns with the program's policy edits that we'd like to see, other than the capital L where appropriate? Given that, do I have a motion to approve the program's policy?
I make a motion to approve our program policy.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Hearing none, the program's policy is approved for another year.
For its first year.
For its first year. I was looking at the note for the mission statement. Do we want to approve the mission statement?
I mean, you can.
With the, so it gets a new, a new date?
New approval date. I mean, we can or just you can just leave it the way it is. We can just leave the date. That kind of gives us a record that we need to work on.
Need to work on it. If that sounds like a good idea.
Yeah, it sounds like.
Very good.
Yeah. Maybe May could come back.
If it's still a work in progress, then yeah, let's leave it as is.
Very good.
Excellent.
Our next agenda item is old business. Does anyone have any old business? No? Uh, new business. Now it's time for new business. Hearing none, let's move to the final agenda item, uh, an adjournment. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second?
Second.
We are adjourned.
Hooray.